Let us know when it's on, please.
Okay, it's on.
It's on?
Yeah, so if you're ready to start.
Those who wish to move themselves at this time from the board seat, please do so. Well, that's it, it's on. Very good. Bill Scanlon, I'm gonna turn it over. Folks, this is Bill Scanlon, the town planner. Bill is gonna present to you tonight the laws as far as the Commonwealth is concerned and the proposed municipal medical marijuana bylaw. Everybody should have a copy if you wish to follow along. Any questions? I'm gonna leave it up to Bill how he entertains it, but please do it so, do it in an orderly manner. All right? Thank you. Bill?
Thank you. I've prepared a handout for discussion this evening. I think that he's given everybody a copy of it. Page and a half summary of what the purpose and substance of this bylaw is all about. So, the purpose of this bylaw is to allow medical marijuana treatment centers in Warren in conformance with state requirements. There was a law passed in 2012 that authorized the establishment of these centers and the use of marijuana for a limited purpose, which is to assist those with medical conditions including cancer, glaucoma, AIDS, Parkinson's disease, and others. The purpose of the law, taking from the act of, the citizens of Massachusetts intend that there should be no punishment under state law for qualifying patients, physicians and health care professionals, personal caregivers for patients, or medical marijuana treatment center agents for the medical use of marijuana. So, the use of marijuana is a federal crime, but through this state law, there is a provision to allow the limited use of marijuana strictly for medical purposes. Under state law, a medical marijuana treatment center must be a not-for-profit entity. It may cultivate, process, dispense, or distribute marijuana only to qualifying patients or their caregivers. Qualifying patients is the person that has been diagnosed by a licensed physician as having a debilitating medical condition. So far, the DPH has amelgated regulations to authorize the licensing of these facilities. The law states that there can be initially thirty-five centers throughout the state. There can be no more than five buccanees, but there should be at least one buccanee. So far, under the page one, the Department of Public Health received one hundred and fifty-eight qualified applications, of which fourteen were in Worcester County. Since then, the state has actually gone ahead and issued provisional licenses to twenty treatment centers statewide. Two of these are in Worcester County, one is in the city of Worcester and one in Milford. Worcester, so far, is the closest one to Warren. There's one in Hampshire County, which is in Northampton, and one in Hampton County, Hoio, which would be the other two that are west of Warren. Under the state law, the town cannot permit these treatment centers. The Attorney General has ruled that a prohibition would conflict with state law. So, what this bylaw does is it establishes regulations and procedures for how one would propose a medical marijuana treatment center in Warren. Without the bylaw, the current zoning bylaw would remain in effect. And I think what would happen is that we would look at the closest thing we have in the bylaw to this kind of a facility, and that would govern where those would be allowed to go. And that, I think, would be left to the zoning enforcement officer, who is the building commissioner, to make that call. But from my reading of the bylaw, I think would be closest to a retail use, which is an allowed use in the village district by law. So, without this bylaw, in my opinion, they could go anywhere in a village district under the provisions of the Warren zoning bylaw, and probably would require site plan approval by the planning board. So, what we are proposing is a bylaw that would require a medical marijuana treatment center to get a special permit and site plan approval from the planning board. The board has considered where this kind of facility would be most appropriate. Any kind of a commercial use or having impacts similar to businesses, one might consider the village districts in Warren as the best location. However, these villages have a high residential density and numerous civic institutions such as churches and parks, and the board felt that just allowing it anywhere in the village district might create some issues for the neighborhoods. So, they've proposed that this be allowed in the mill conversion overlay district, which is essentially the right mill in West Warren. The mill has several advantages for this. One is a self-contained development that can easily expose such a project without harmful impacts on the neighborhood. There's a lot of vacant space in the mill, so there's plenty of room to develop security measures, et cetera, to control any kind of illegal activity. And there are no churches or parks or other civic institutions that would be harmed by such an activity. So, the provision of, so the bylaw includes several provisions which we think are important to help control this kind of activity. One, require a five-hundred-foot separation from a park, school, church, or other place where children may come to. Require a security plan which would be reviewed by their police chief. Require a ten-foot landscape buffer on the sides of the road of property to shield that used for many smaller residences. Town doesn't really have a good sign bylaw, so we put in a provision there to allow signs to advertise the use, and also to have directional signs so that people coming in there for the first time will be able to navigate their way through the mill. We have a proposal to limit hours of operation from eight AM to eight PM on Monday through Saturday. We have noise limits for equipment. It may be possible that these kinds of uses, particularly if they're cultivation sites, might have blowers and fans and other kinds of equipment that might generate noise. So, we are essentially requiring a performance to the EEP noise policy. The planning board could require a parking analysis. We don't really know how much parking would be required for these kinds of things, so we would ask the applicant to present a study which justified the number of spaces which he would provide. And then, the special permit would apply only to the original applicant. If there was a change of ownership, the applicant would have to come back and apply, reapply for the special permit. The bylaw that we have as a handout, on the last page, has a map of West Warren. And I put this together to help illustrate the effect of buffers. The operating areas are the parks and the churches, the dams. We'd have to have a buffer, in other words, a medical marijuana treatment center would have to be located as specified distance away from those kinds of facilities. And then, they generated the buffers around those sites. So, the farthest out of buffer is a thousand feet from those uses. The middle one is a five-hundred-foot buffer, and the imperial one is a three-hundred-foot buffer. So, for example, if we decided to allow this in the village district in West Warren, you could see the locations where that would be available. They'd have to be outside of those buffer areas, either a three-hundred-foot, five-hundred-foot, or a thousand-foot buffer. In our bylaw, we propose the five-hundred-foot buffer. You can also see that the overlay district is that hatched area with the slanted lines through it. That's the mill conversion overlay district, which is where we are proposing to allow these centers to locate. And you can see the effect of the buffers. The thousand-foot buffer would obviously extend pretty far into the mill. The five-hundred-foot buffer would hit sort of that first building. And then, the three-hundred-foot buffer would just very well hit that building. Under the DPH regulations, an applicant would have to comply with the local zoning bylaw. And in the absence of any such regulation, there is a default buffer of five-hundred feet from a church or a school or a pub. So, if the town did not have a buffer in it, that five-hundred-foot state requirement would still come into effect. So, that's our proposal. And on the last, the second page of the handout this evening, I wanted to get some feedback from the public about this, so I put down a couple of questions. Should the town develop regulations to approve this kind of use? And as I mentioned, without them, my opinion, they could leave the village district at the five-year age. Is the mill conversion overlay district the right location for one of these centers? And does the five-hundred-foot setback from schools and parks, et cetera, make sense? Or should be a greater or lesser number? I'm not gonna go through the text of the bylaw itself, but if you have any questions about it, we can certainly address those. I just wanted to give you sort of an overview of the proposal in that separate handout so you could get sort of an understanding of what we're proposing. If you have any questions, I think the planning board, we can certainly address those as well.
Text the quick and the short of it. Right now, the way it is here, that the state has set the standards, okay? They have the standards. We have looked at it, Bill has drafted this, we're all looking at it together. What I'd like to do now, Bill, you can answer any of the questions, and from the board. We'll start with the folks in the audience. Ed, go ahead and work right on it. Bill, you have time.
By placing this in the mill conversion district, I know the town's been looking at getting some schools, some colleges in there. Is this gonna be the right place if a treatment center does locate in the mill conversion district? Is that gonna deter a school from moving in there? And can it with the five-hundred-foot buffer zones in place?
That's a good question. The treatment center cannot go in a location where there's such a facility today existing. So, if a school were to locate in the label, that would not change the legitimacy of the treatment center. The school could still go there, would be prohibited by this bylaw from the other side.
But it could act as a deterrent. Would a school wanna go in there? I mean, if...
I wonder if it could. You know, it's a good question.
But they're not kids. They're not talking to high school. They're talking to adults.
Could act as an attraction, too.
But that's where, in a college atmosphere, I mean, there's maybe adults, you know, after hours schooling, whatever. Are they gonna wanna move into a district with a head shop in it?
I don't think that's a deterrent today. I think they look at it as just another medical treatment center.
Is it a head shop there? Or is it a medical dispensary center? That's the wording that the law has. Well, there is a big difference. Head shops and medical, the people coming in with the doctors' note, getting whatever they need and going out versus bongs and everything else, I'm not speaking from experience, but working from everything else that a head shop would have, okay? So, that is a good question, yet it is a medical facility, not the other thing, and that's my name. Chief, you had a question, sir?
Yeah, I think maybe the answer to that question, maybe a little bit more succinctly, is, I think the question is if a medical marijuana treatment facility goes in there, and then a school wants to come in, is the medical marijuana grandfathered in by statute or by the bylaw? Or do they then have to cease operations because the school takes...
No, they would be...
They'd be grandfathered. Because I didn't see a grandfather clause in that bylaw.
Maybe we could do something like that, just to clarify.
Is it, Bill, do you have any data on, there's only, what, there's only one? How many centers are operational now?
Milford and Worcester, right?
Milford and Worcester.
Twenty provisional licenses have been issued.
But two are operational.
Are there two operational now? Okay.
Any data on increases in crime, problems associated with cultivation, security, any data at all? Because I looked, I can't find it.
Did you have any, Chief, did you have any comments on the security plan?
Well, I read through the bylaw, and it's like we've discussed briefly, there was some boilerplate language in there, but no, I agree with the section in there that says that the security has to be reviewed and any changes, so no, there's anything.
We had a question back here, sir?
Yeah. It's kind of along similar lines with the security issue, so maybe it's not really something that we can answer right now. But I just recall when we were having the information sessions about the police station potentially going down in that area, the fact that that's really the run of the worst calls that the police station gets comes from that area. I mean, probably in part, security would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis for the special permit application. I mean, do you have any concerns from that aspect? Do you know what I'm saying? Like versus putting it, I don't know, up on Reed Street where there's a whole lot of crime? Just as an example.
You know, if we put it in the mill conversion overlay district, that's very self-contained kind of property. I don't think there's a lot of illegal activity that goes on down there. I don't really see that as a concern.
Okay.
What might be more a concern in the village area?
As one moves in, so will others. Once the mill complex starts to develop, specifically if this is a proposal, and it does happen there, and it's a medical marijuana facility, possibilities of other facilities moving in there. With that, if we all think of it, more that move into the area, the crime, if there is... Depending on percentage, whatever it may be, would probably drop more because a lot of the facility is open, is available to anybody, but with more people coming and going at different times of days. And hopefully, as Ed said, colleges are looking into it. The superintendent has been up there. I believe Mr. Souza and Bill have been involved with the owners. So, if things go, night classes or whatever may happen, that's gonna lower a lot of the problem. There'll be more lighting and things. So, that's the thing. Chief?
Just on that same note, if a college or a school commits to that property first, that would create an additional buffer zone which would negate the facility from going in there in the first place.
They could be doing that. In the back, would you, you made one, yeah, a comment?
Well, I think that one of the concerns I might have about the community that lives in the back is their security.
The five or ten houses in the back, you're right up there, perhaps they call it, yeah?
Once the facility was to go in there, would the chief need extra security for those families for whatever reason? You know, I think your point was well-taken, and we need to keep reiterating. It's not a head shop. It's a highly regulated spot that is going to be self-contained. As an employee of rights, I can tell you, it is not currently, nor was it ever, secure. So, to say right now it's a secure environment, it is not a secure environment. We had several things happen in that factory in the time I was there, that we had fifteen-foot chain link fence, and people still got in. So, it's gonna happen wherever we are, you know, the reality of it. But the fact is, it is not, it's not a second-rate kind of a thing. This has been studied, it comes with a lot of money behind it. My question about that property, however, is, is it a rented property to this facility? Or is it owned by the actual business people that go in there to provide the...
It doesn't have to be owned by a nonprofit entity. It could be leased by an entity, by a...
So, all of the property, so then, the, if it's a nonprofit organization, is it providing the town with any tax incentive? Are we getting any tax money or any...
Well, it would have to be a 501(c)(3) or a designation for the tax intent, which is different than just being a not-for-profit. So, if they do apply, get that designation from the IRS, then yes, they would be taxed exempt if they actually...
So, it's not monetarily a great thing for us. It's not an incentive for us in our, for our tax.
Well, to possibly thirty jobs, maybe, well...
It depends on either facility, but yes, that's about it.
But if it was leased, obviously, the value of that building then would be cashed off.
Stay by one, folks. Brian, you had a comment?
Well, he answered it further on, but they're gonna protect their investment there, whoever it is, okay? Probably way better than we could even think about.
Good possibility to that, too. So, that is a fact, yeah? Melissa, in the center?
I had gone through Springfield's bylaw, their proposed bylaw, and they mentioned actually requiring a community host agreement of anyone that comes in. Have you considered that?
I had not, no.
Okay. I'm thinking we might be able to get some folks.
What does Springfield ask for?
It's not specific. It just says, in addition to the issuance of a special permit, the applicant shall also be required to enter into an approved post-community agreement.
There's something to look into about that. Lois, has he even got a copy of that? Then Bill will have that, and he can make a copy after it. So?
I think if they need more information, contact me, because they've been operational for several years now. And there's been articles in the Sunday papers. I think there's several of them, or one or two are important. And the article that was in the Sunday paper, not as busy as yours, though, they weren't having a lot of security issues and problems with. But I know that May's got several.
Any other questions, Ed?
Springfield's bylaw, I think it's a five-hundred buffer from any residents. The question with the five or ten residents back in the Wright's Mill, is there any way we could do a buffer from those residents without completely eliminating Wright's Mill? I mean, I'm not too familiar with where those houses are, but, you know, no, I wouldn't want a shop like that right next to it. In full disclosure, I have a medical condition. I can go get medical marijuana under what you told me you said. Not that that would ever be an option of mine, but, you know, I wouldn't want one of these things next to my house, right next to it. I mean, is there any way we could put a buffer for residents?
To do so with those houses down near it, there's a few of them that are right on the fence, right on the Wright's fifteen-foot or twelve-foot fence that you just mentioned. They're right there, their properties are right there.
So, that would negate...
And right across to them is probably four more, and there's probably less than five hundred feet as a crow flies between all the houses in the fence that are in that one far corner. Bill?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could look at it. I've not really seen anybody do that, buffer from each, you know, home.
You know, Springfield's at five-hundred, you know, that would, I think, wipe out Wright's Mill, but...
They have to be in an industrial district, and it's Springfield, and it would not have a...
Far away from it, it would be a long ways.
Michael Burrow?
Yes, citizen, in fact, for the town. Just one question for the board. Is there anything, or maybe Mr. Scanlon would be the right person. If an IRS 501(c)(3) nonprofit decides to bring a medical marijuana facility in town, would there be anything in the bylaws that would prohibit the nonprofit if it decided on its own free will to donate money to the town? So, for example, if the police department needed a cruiser, that private nonprofit could say, "No problem, we'll donate fifty thousand dollars for you to buy a car. No problem, you need a new ambulance, there's three hundred thousand, no problem." Yes, three hundred thousand. Is there anything that would prevent any nonprofit from being able to be overly generous or to do, to create some step for the town that it could do something, whether it donated money to like the Firefighters Association or the Police Union, or paid the money, you know, paid the money directly?
The only restriction is the town meeting has to vote to accept a gift.
Yeah, we'd have to be a floor vote.
But there's nothing that would...
And with that, legal counsel, obviously, would have to look into it. And then, it would be a town vote to accept based on how much over cost of time. So, that would be the only way it could be done if that facility wishes to do so. You know, it'd have to go to the floor, so, okay?
If they did do a community host agreement, that would cover, that would cover it. That's what they're doing, yeah. That's what they're doing with the...
Well, that's something, again, that would have to, even with the community host agreement, that still has to be looked into, how it's gonna be organized and accepted. And the town would have to have input with it, the whole town is itself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anything else? Yeah, go.
One more question. Could you speak, Mr. Scanlon, to what it means to cultivate for the folks in the room? What, we're not having open fields of marijuana. Can you talk about what that means?
Yeah, there are, I think, there are two kinds of cultivation. There's provision in the law for hardship cultivation, where an individual can actually set aside a portion of their home or property to grow marijuana for their own personal use. And they can only do that if they have a legitimate hardship, you know, the mobility issues, for example, and one too far away for them to get to. So, there is a provision that individuals could grow enough for their own use. I think the intent of what you're talking about is more of a large-scale cultivation. And these nonprofit organizations can, you know, grow their own marijuana and then sell it at their own dispensaries, or they could sell it to other dispensaries. They have to be in secure locked locations, however. They couldn't be like out in open fields someplace that might be open to anybody to come in and, you know, and steal something. So, it has to be a secure locked facility in order to be permitted to grow or cultivate marijuana.
And that means not in a greenhouse either. That's a locked-in room with lights, specific lighting, specific growing condition.
So, but the mill, of course, has plenty of floor space.
They do.
So, they could do a lot of cultivation inside there if they so chose.
It's also been taught correctly from home, Bill, by hydrophonics. Okay? Using power, water power, which is accessible, as you should, as you probably know, down at the right. You've got the water coming over the dam, water going in, and growing it hydrophonically, too. And that was been proposed in other areas, so you have those two rules. Others, please?
Well, actually, I just thought of one more question. Actually, this might be, you know, a question for the public safety folks, or just something I just happened to think of. Obviously, with marijuana, there's lots of lights and stuff like that. Does that mill actually have any fire suppression system, equipment inside? Which I know is, it does.
It has sprinkled, actually.
Oh, okay, okay. So, this, I was just thinking, what happens if something happened? Obviously, you know, with plants and flammable stuff.
I kind of know that because the examiner said they need to keep the temperature at least in thirty-three degrees so the fires don't freeze before the sprinkler system solves.
So, it does have a sprinkler system, it is in compliance with fire regulations?
If it didn't, it would probably, it would have to be brought up to it.
That's what I figured, yeah, okay.
The fire chief and the police chief, the two public safety departments would be well involved in how that would happen.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Being in the mill of that age.
Right, yeah. Just great, thank you very much.
Yep, Brian?
I'm not trying to be facetious, but what are the odds of this happening in my lifetime?
Well, you know, it's a market-driven process. So, someone would have to actually propose one for Warren in that initial round.
Can you give me some statistics, maybe, just your opinion?
I think there were one hundred and fifty-eight initial applications, none of which were in Warren. So, I don't think it's an imminent kind of thing, but it remains to be seen.
Well, say I live twenty years.
Yeah, I think it's possible.
Okay, thank you. I'll be waiting around for it.
I think after it's advertised, like if you do the website, it comes up that this complex is available and everything, if it's acceptable. If it's acceptable, I think it'll probably happen a lot sooner than twenty years. It's kind of a slow case, so... It is.
There's a lot of the old mills. You think of Thondike and others, you think of down in the Uxbridge area, the unfortunate mills that were burned down a few years ago, and the mills that still exist down in that corridor, Blackstone Valley corridor. I mean, those are the perfect places. You know, whether or not, it's a medical facility. So, with medical facilities and the mills that are still existing in good condition, why not? Okay? Let it go. And a point I'm gonna bring up here for all of us, that we are not denying anything. We've been, a couple of months ago, it was brought to a point that the town was, you know, when we talked about the moratorium and went to the town floor, that we were denying. And it got into a pretty ugly, I'll say ugly, conversation on the floor and stuff, and there was a lot of loud comments. And we, the intent was not to deny the town, the intent was to propose something just like this, and then the state came out with their laws. We looked at this, we had a proposal, but this was just about it. Now, the state says, you gotta be prepared for them. So, we're back here. This has to go to the floor, folks, and it's right there. It's not a denial for a medical facility in any ways. It's just that protect the facility and the town. That's all. Brian, you had a comment?
Well, you kind of answered it, I understand. I mean, if you think it's a good thing, then you either at least want to just stay neutral, or, you know, that's my opinion. I mean, if you think it's a good thing for the town, you might want to just stay neutral. Whatever the state is, boom. Because otherwise, who's gonna pick Warren for this? I mean, come on, we go, what, three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in the state, and we're gonna get one in Warren? You think in the next twenty years? I just don't follow your logic, but that's my opinion.
It's still on a trial basis, it can open up, yeah, and it's a more physical place.
I just think that the population is small, you know?
But you're gonna draw from other areas. People from here will be going to Northampton. They'll be going to Hoio, they'll be going down to Milford.
Into Worcester.
Into Worcester.
At some point, it's probably gonna teeter off, though, you know? I mean, it's gonna be like...
Versus...
I mean, it's going to be like versus, it's going to be like CBS, Ryan, and all of them together, it's going to get like that, maybe. When there's money, it probably will.
If it proves to be a medical, a medical situation that is going to help people with severe problems, then I don't think there's anybody who would ever want to deny a person with a medical problem of right or the benefit to help themselves, medically. That's what we're talking about. We are talking about a medical facility that helps people who have severe problems and problems that doctors and research say that this plant can help.
Right. My point wasn't, Bill shook his head yes, is that at least just stay neutral.
Exactly.
That's all, that's my only point.
We are staying neutral and preparing.
Okay.
Melissa, and stand by, Melissa.
Phil, can you clarify that also, the difference between dispensaries and treatment centers? Is there a difference? And I'm getting a little confused in some of the language.
The definition, if you look on the first page of the bylaw, the definition is, any of these kinds of activities would be considered a medical marijuana treatment center. So if an RMD or registered marijuana dispensary acquires, cultivates, possesses processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana, infused products, tinctured aerosol, oils, ornaments, transfers, transport, sells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana, products containing marijuana, related supplies, or educational materials. So any of those activities would be considered a medical marijuana treatment center and would fall under the terms of the bylaw.
They're using marijuana pills now, as it works in the town, for cancer patients and everything.
Those have been out for years.
Yes.
Ed?
So I know it says in here, medical, medical, medical law for the bylaw, if hypothetically, we turn into Colorado and, you know, legalize it, that these can't turn into a general retail head shop or...
No, that would happen on Main Street.
Well, I mean, I think...
That would be a side shot.
The MNTC's, if it becomes...
Yeah. Because basically, it's a fair way.
Right, so there's no need for that kind of...
Hypothetically, there's all kinds down the road. This is what we, right now, we have what is being proposed. You can look down the road, and there's pros and cons for all. Yeah, this is what we have at this point. Anything else, please? Bill, you want to close it?
Actually, I have one more.
Yes, oh, sure, fine.
I'm playing Deb's advocate.
Go for it.
Should the facility come in, does the town departments, Board of Health, Planning Board, would you be the, who would make sure that they're in compliance with permitting? Like, let's say, the herbalist who's there, is the herbalist permitted for pesticide, herbicide? Are they licensed? Are they in fully compliance with their license? Who would be, how does the town get involved with that? And is it the nonprofit who hires their own outside people to handle that? How does that work?
Well, I think it would depend on what activities take place. If they're manufacturing food, I think Board of Health would have inspection responsibilities. If they're storing, you know, pesticides and whatnot, then that would be a fire chief kind of responsibility.
So the town would be involved to some degree?
Under permits, you have your building inspector by code.
Right.
Okay? Pesticides is Board of Health and state DEP. Anything that's going to be stored and utilized as a whatever, that's state-regulated and Board of Health. As far as Board of Health would be concerned, any other types of, how it's made, how it's, the air qualities or whatever, that would be Board of Health. And you've got to remember that the state Department of Public Health will also have to come out with certain standards for it also. They've been, they've been working on this, they are part of this, yet there isn't one yet. So as it starts to move on and one is established, those that are going to be established that are established, I'm sure the towns and the state DEP one and Department of Public Health will be right there making sure that the building inspectors, the permitting issuings, and the Board of Health becomes more heavily involved with things like that.
So it's open door like any other industrial park with regard to the town?
Yeah, yes, yeah. Okay? Anything else?
That's through the special permit process, those applications should come.
Yeah, with the planning board, we have hours.
Distributed to all the departments for comment.
I'm just making sure there's no loophole where a nonprofit comes in and now all of a sudden, they are state-regulated, also state-inspected. I think we need to make sure that we have the right to go on that property and make sure they're in compliance with everything, that we're, you know, we're in good faith bringing them on the property and saying, sure, I have your business, but we don't want to close door.
That's the nonprofit end of it. That's a good point, yeah.
Basically, if we don't have a bylaw, that's how it's going to pretty much go.
Right.
Anything else? It's the beginning, folks. This is the informational hearing with the beginning. You have the copy of the proposal here, based on state law. People will be asking more questions. There'll be more, there'll be more comments being made amongst the streets and over meals and having to bear with. Yet with this, this is the informational meeting right now. You have a copy of it? We're public with it now. I'm going to ask the board, and folks, this is for the board, please. Would the board like to have one more informational meeting prior to the, prior to the...
Prior to the public hearing?
Prior to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Fine. Very good, all agree with you. Thank you, forward, Steve. Melissa, please.
I didn't see anything on odors.
Yeah, there is.
Did I say that again, Melissa?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
I didn't hear you, Melissa. Odors.
Odors.
Oh, odors, yes. Yeah?
Yes.
It's not in the sheet that you just got.
It's in the bylaw.
It's in the bylaw.
Oh, okay.
The bylaw.
And fumes.
Natural fumes or fumes or how it is.
The thing with regulating fans and everything, what was, when Wright's was going, you had to attach lowers and fans and everything, so...
I know there's a lot of people in this town that go way back with Wright's. And those that had the opportunity to make a living there did so. The building had its exhaust fans and everything else, yet this would be more considered a contained area with fumes and things like that, so...
But it used more than noise.
Noise and that with exhaust or something like that, the odor, so that would be something that everything is going to be looked at at an individual basis and see how it can be not controlled or regulated, how we can work with the individuals, or opposing individuals. Any other questions for the board? So the board does feel that we should have one more, one more informational meeting prior to the public. All right. With that, folks, it'll be a posted meeting as this one was. It'll be on every major portion of our website, newspapers, and everything posted within the town. And reach out to others, reach out to people in town, let them know we're talking about it, please.